Okay. Returning call, back on the calendar, continue hearing items, item number 1928913B.C., 473541 Sixth Street, and also item number 1014292B.C., 473541 Sixth Street, Brooklyn.
Yes.
I guess it's noon, so I don't know whether to say good morning or good afternoon. Elise Wagner from Kramer Levin, Neftalison, Frankel for the applicant, New York Methodist Hospital. As you know, the hospital is requesting a variance and an amendment of a prior special permit to facilitate the development of a new ambulatory care center to be known as the Center for Community Health on the hospital's campus in Park Slope, Brooklyn. Following the board's public hearing on February 11th, the hospital submitted updated materials on March 4th. Those materials included, among other things, a study of lesser variance alternatives, a garage overbuild study, and streetscape images showing the proposed center in context. We also informed the board by letter late last week that the hospital will make modifications to the building's design to address concerns raised by this board and by the community board regarding the massing of the building, particularly in the contextual zoning districts. Our presentation today will describe these proposed modifications in greater detail and will respond to several of the questions raised by the board at its review session yesterday regarding traffic and construction staging. We understand that Preserve Park Slope intends to make a presentation regarding its proposal to build over the garage. The hospital's architects and consultants have studied this option carefully, and, as they will describe later, they have determined that the build-over-garage option would have most of the same infirmities as the complying development that we have described and would require approximately the same extent of waivers as the proposed center. Our presenters today will include Lauren Yedvab, Senior Vice President at New York Methodist, Brian Richard of Philippa Beeben Associates Traffic Consultants, and Chuck Richman of Len Lee's Construction Managers. After Preserve Park Slope has made its presentation, with the chair's permission, the hospital's experts would like to respond, and those will be Michael Kortler, our zoning consultant, and Frank Gunther of Perkins Eastman Architects. I just note, we are again joined by Lynn Hill, Vice President for Communication and External Affairs at Methodist, Paul Travis of Washington Square Partners, and Stephen Holly of AKRF, and they will be available to answer any questions the board may have. Lauren?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Lauren Yedvab. I am the Senior Vice President at New York Methodist Hospital. The hospital has given serious consideration to both the comments made by the board at the public hearing last month and the conditions set forth by the community board's resolution with respect to the height and setback of the building along Fifth Street. In response to these comments, the hospital has decided to make three design modifications to reduce the presence of the building on Fifth Street. These modifications create some programmatic changes, but our architects have determined that they are feasible. The modifications are as follows. In the R6B district, the building setback at the fourth floor will be increased by an additional 15 feet to a total depth of 20 feet from the property line. Also, in the R6B district, the building setback at the fifth, sixth, and seventh floors will be increased by an additional 10 feet from the currently proposed setback distance to a total depth of 41 feet from the property line. In the R7B district, the building setback at the sixth floor will be increased by 21 feet so that no portion of the sixth floor is located in the R7B district. With this modification, the building will fully comply with the applicable height and setback regulations in the R7B district. We're going to go to the aerial view. This aerial view compares the March 4th submission with our proposed reduction. These modifications result in a building that is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and the following slides will show rendering views of our proposed reductions. The first slide shows a view coming down Eighth Avenue. The next slide is a closer view from Eighth Avenue and Sixth Street. The next view is of Eighth Avenue from Fifth Street, and the last is a view from Seventh Avenue looking up Fifth Street. We are working with Perkins Eastman to finalize the proposed program for this modified building. We expect to submit revisions, revised versions of the proposed plans and other application materials to the board within the next two weeks. With respect to traffic management, I would like to note that the hospital is aware of existing traffic management issues on the streets surrounding the hospital. We have instituted a program whereby the hospital's staff monitors the streets surrounding the hospital and encourages double parked cars to move along. The hospital is also working with Councilmember Brad Lander's Traffic Task Force and expects that the task force will recommend further traffic management measures that the hospital will undertake. In fact, the hospital is already working to implement some of the measures recommended by some of the members of the task force. We have also met with all of the principals of the schools housed in the John Jay Educational Campus to discuss the Center for Community Health and how the construction will affect the surrounding streets. We agreed to meet with them periodically as the construction progresses. At this time, I would like to introduce Brian Richard from Philippa Beeben Associates, who will now discuss the traffic impact of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Brian Richard from Philippa Beeben Associates. I conducted the transportation, I'm sorry, I did the transportation attachment in the EIS, and in that, in that study, we compared the complying development with the proposed development. Since the complying development was of comparable size as the proposed development, the increase in travel demand was negligible, so under secret guidelines, we did not, it did not warrant a detailed analysis of the intersections or transit or pedestrian facilities in the area. However, New York Methodist asked us to do another due diligence study where we analyzed existing conditions in the area and compared it to the proposed development. One of the interesting things about the travel demand for this building is that 54% of the total travel demand for the proposed building actually already exists in the building across the street, so therefore, the actual increase in travel demand to the area with the proposed development is actually only 46% of the entire building. And since patient visits are scheduled pretty uniformly across the entire day, the actual increase in vehicles or pedestrian trips is relatively low over the course of the entire day. The study that I conducted found that, based on secret criteria, no impacts would be created in any of the six intersections that we looked at in the study area, which included Seventh Avenue and Fifth Street across from John Jay. Some of the design elements of the building were sympathetic to the traffic in the area and to the community, and they include the on-street drop-off area, I'm sorry, onsite drop-off area, which has access only off of Sixth Street. This keeps a majority of all the patient drop-offs and patient visits to Sixth Street and not onto Fifth Street. And another, another element of this onsite drop-off is that patients that currently drop off on Sixth Street and Seventh Avenue would now be moved to onto this onsite drop-off area. This would, this would improve the quality of flow that exists on Sixth Street and Seventh Avenue. The proposed garage would include 350 parking spaces. Now, since the proposed development is building on top of an existing lot, the actual net increase in parking spaces to New York Methodist campus is actually only 233 spaces. And as I said before, the patient demand is pretty uniform across the entire day, so the parking demand is relatively light. It's only about 104 spaces at its peak, so there would be approximately 100 spaces left over for, for Methodist to decide whatever they wish to do with them. Finally, the other design element to the building is the Fifth Street loading dock, which is over the existing parking deck. It's an internal loading dock with head-in, head-out operations so that a truck coming down Fifth Street can drive into the loading dock and then do all of its maneuvering onsite and then drive out, unlike the Seventh Avenue loading dock where the maneuvering happens on the street.
And as per your analysis, how many trucks do you anticipate would be coming to this loading dock?
It's approximately 30, 30 trucks daily with three in, in the peak hour, at most three.
Okay.
And when I say a truck, I mean, you know, it's not your tractor-trailer, it's your small truck, it's your van. 30 deliveries, I'm sorry, I should really say.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner?
And that's comparable to what is currently happening, or is it an increase? I wasn't clear.
Uh...
The amount of trucks?
It would, it would be 40, 40, 46%. I'm sorry. No, it would be, it would be additional.
So it's 30 additional trucks, not, okay.
Yes.
It wasn't clear whether you meant 30 total or 30 additional.
I apologize.
Right, but right now, is there any truck traffic on Fifth Street?
Uh, I don't, I don't believe so, but there is, it's for local deliveries.
Right, local deliveries, okay. All right. And just, the garage, the existing garage, which is under the special permit, that'll continue to function as it functions today with its access, is that access from Fifth Street as well?
Right now, there is no access off Fifth Street, but with the proposed development, they will go back to their permitted access off of Fifth Street for the original special permit.
Okay, because it's blocked off or something?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Which is a temporary measure, is that?
Uh, I, yes.
Okay, but the special permit allowed access from Fifth Street?
It allowed for, for access during peak hours, which, which, when the proposed development is, is built, the gate will be open only during the peak hours, which is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
For the garage?
For the garage, yes.
And, but otherwise, so that's during peak hours, Fifth Street entrance is open, but otherwise for the remaining portion?
It would be closed.
It's all from Sixth Street, is that correct?
Yes, it would all be off of Sixth Street, yes. And, and the new garage for the proposed development?
Is all from Sixth Street?
Is off of Sixth Street, and will also be connected to the, to the existing garage as well below.
Okay. And one other issue, question is that, just to clarify, there are no ambulances that are coming to the site, right, coming to the new facility?
No, no, it's all, it's all ambulatory care, it's all elective surgery, there's no, no ambulances that are going to be coming to this, this building.
Okay. All right, I interrupted your presentation.
I was, I was going to talk about the ambulances, and that was it.
Okay. All right, any questions for now? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Chuck Richman. I am a Director of Operations for Len Lee's, the construction manager for the project. We have been working with the Methodist team since the project began, so we've been involved for a while. We understand the challenges of building a project of this type in this neighborhood. You know, we take it very seriously. Planning is our most important goal on any of our projects. To highlight a couple of the challenges we, we focused on, first and foremost is safety, is, is building a project that is completely contained. The construction activities are separated from the public and the property. The neighboring properties are protected. We have focused the logistics to be on mainly on Sixth Street.
If you could take the mic with you when you go up to the board, because you lose the volume.
So we, so we looked at the logistics to mainly occur on Sixth Street. We are going to have trucks come down Sixth Street, our hoists would be on Sixth Street, men, material workers would come in and out from Sixth Street. This will eliminate the need to have loading and unloading on Fifth Street or Eighth Avenue. So trucks will come down and keep going that way. So there'll be no construction traffic on Fifth and almost nothing on Eighth Avenue with that plan. We have forecasted the construction schedule to be approximately 36 months, six months for demolition, and 30 months for the new construction. We have looked into specialized equipment to help minimize noise pollution, air pollution. We've also, will be working closely with New York Methodist and interacting with the community. We will have a liaison that will help plan any activities that affect the neighborhood as well as address any of your concerns. So I think that's it for this part of the presentation.
Commissioner Magnus, I know you had some concerns.
Yeah, I know that Sixth Street is currently used to deliver patients, it's for ambulances, it's a narrow street. How do you intend to have all this, the trucks, all the truck deliveries, any excavation equipment, it's all, everything is coming down Sixth Street? It just seems like a very small space to put everything.
It is, but the entire site will be contained in a construction fence. We will need to eliminate the parking on the north side of Sixth Street, so trucks will come in and take that parking lane and not take the active through lane. So they'll come into a fence and then leave out through the fence. So we won't be unloading, we won't be double parking, unloading material from the middle of the road blocking traffic. The truck has to pull within to the site and leave the same way.
And I understand it's mandatory that no construction workers will be parking in the neighborhood?
That's correct.
And you're going to find off-site parking?
We are, we have, we've looked at...
You're going to have buses bring...
Shuttleling and off-site storage possibly in downtown. That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Wagner, do you have any, any other speakers?
That is the end of our presentation, but we would certainly like to respond after the Preserve Park Slope presentation. Thank you.
That seems fine. All right, Mr. Klein?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Commissioners. My name is Stuart Klein, and I'm here representing Preserve Park Slope. My comments will be brief because we have a rather extensive submission, a presentation. I would start by, by saying I'm rather surprised that the special permit component of this is on for today's calendar, I was unaware of that. We didn't have a chance to review it or to comment on it, and I think we should be given that additional time. The other thing I'd like to comment on is that we recently received partial plans last week, no elevations, no cross-sections, and much of the floors were missing from the presentation, which arguably were done, in the words of the applicant, in response to the community board's questions and this board's questions. However, I would note that this was done two months, or rather, almost a full month after their previous submission, and nearly two months after the public hearing. So I don't understand why there was this sudden epiphany on the very eve of this hearing where new plans had to suddenly be submitted in response to various sundry statements which were made months ago. So I think we should have the opportunity to review those new plans when and if they do come in and comment on them accordingly at the next hearing. With regard to the safety at the site, I don't know what Bovis is speaking about with regard to its speaking to the community, nobody's spoken to the community. I have a rather cynical view of them, hopefully they'll do a better job here than they did at Deutsche Bank. The, the question I have, which was not addressed at yesterday's hearing and doesn't seem to be addressed on, with any of the submissions by the applicant, and in fact, they, they seem to have turned a dead eye to them, to the issue is whether or not this is truly a Cornell case. Cornell did not cover hospitals, it did not cover anything outside of schools and religious institutions, and therefore, under the precedent of this zoning board, Court of Appeals, in the Cornell case and the accompanying case, Sarah Lawrence, is required to ask them to detail their programmatic needs. What we have here is a bunch of programmatic wishes and not needs. I fail to see how this 300,000-square-foot building is going to be an educational institution. It doesn't fit within the definition of education institution that's been established repeatedly by the Courts of New York. Certainly, the 80,000-plus square feet of new medical space for private doctors to come in and become part of their, their billing protocols is certainly not, doesn't have anything whatsoever to do with teaching. And, and the final thing I'd like to comment on, and I'm most disturbed by this, is I've reviewed each and every one of the applications that were submitted by hospitals, all of which were in Manhattan and were viewed by the board, and in each of those cases, the board demanded and received additional information with regard to the teaching aspect of the facility. It also demanded and received quantification, which the court requires, of the hardships. It also demanded and received studies that were done, demographic studies and need studies that were done by the hospital. For whatever reason, I don't know why, for whatever reason, the board has not required that in this particular circumstance, why it has decided to step away from the very requirements you made for every single hospital in Manhattan, Presbyterian, Wild Cornell, NYU Langin, and Sloan-Kettering, particularly the 1133 York Avenue site, is very disturbing to me, and I just don't see how this presentation meets any of the requirements and any standards you set forth, this board set forth, in any of the prior applications. Thank you.
Thank you. You have speakers, correct? Yes.
All right.
My name is Bennett Kleinberg. I'm a grateful patient of New York Methodist, a strong supporter of their mission, and a neighbor on Fifth Street. I'm also the president of Preserve Park Slope, an organization comprised of hundreds of neighbors that share the hospital's, hospital's desire to enhance healthcare services and remain financially viable while also respecting the unique character of the Park Slope neighborhood. The hospital's architects at Perkins Eastman have suggested that this U-shaped configuration of the proposed ambulatory care center is the only way the hospital's programmatic needs can be met. Most relevant to this body, they are here making the argument that their plan, their U-shaped plan, requires the minimum necessary variance to achieve their program. However, a careful review and analysis conducted by a team of professional architects, urban designers, historic preservationists, and zoning experts shows that other solutions exist for this site. We will demonstrate that there are alternatives to Perkins Eastman's design that would meet the hospital's claimed programmatic needs, require far fewer variances, and be far more contextually appropriate for the surrounding Park Slope Historic District. This is not to say that we believe the scale, the scale proposed by Methodist is necessary, but rather, it means that Methodist has not come close to seeking the minimum variance necessary. For instance, based on the hospital's own structural engineer's letter from Severn and Associates and their testimony in front of this board, it's clear that Methodist can build a portion of their project on the garage, on the garage location without creating any hardship to their operations or altering their design concept. To illustrate this, we're going to present a series of conceptual drawings which illustrate how such a building might look. Where are New York Methodist to construct just five floors on the existing garage site and request a small rear yard variance for that site? Recognizing that hospital design demands specialized expertise, we consulted with several hospital architects and certified medical planners to ensure that modern and generally accepted design concepts were being adhered to in structure, in a structure that utilized the garage site. For the purposes of our presentation, we will refer to this alternative approach as the garage build. This alternative garage build scheme provides the following. It allows for the large 95-foot floor plates that Methodist says are required to meet their programmatic need. It reduces the entire bulk of the building and allows the entire operating and recovery suite to be located on one floor, not two, thereby reducing the need for variances. The result is a building significantly reduced in height across the R6, R6B, and R7B zones simply by a shift onto the garage wing. This disperses the FAR and brings the entire complex more closely in line with the essential character of the neighborhood. Methodist has presented to the board a flawed proposal with a false choice, a complying plan with two unconnected buildings that create all kinds of operational difficulties, and their proposed one that supposedly meets all of their needs. However, as we will show, there is a compelling alternative where the area above the garage is fully used, the two previously unconnected buildings are connected, and programs are logically placed. Since this alternative is clearly doable, the plan presented by Methodist to the board is not the minimum variance necessary, and the board has no basis on which to grant the variance. The application should therefore be denied. David Hirsch, an esteemed architect with multiple degrees from Harvard and Cooper Union, will now show how fully using the garage space, a building of lesser scale that includes the claimed programmatic needs and requiring much less of a variance, can be created. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is David Hirsch. I represent the architects and urban design team that have been developing the alternate garage approach. We're not pretending to be the hospital's architects. We're simply showing a concept that would allow a lesser variance by using the five-story potential of the existing garage. As Bennett indicated, this lesser, this approach demonstrates that the hospital is not asking for the minimum variance necessary, and as a primary example of this, we illustrate the advantage of the most critical floor, the OR suite, including OR and PACU and that facility. It's shown on this drawing, unfortunately, the lights are interfering. Is it possible to turn off the lights? I'll use the diagram.
Okay, and it seems like there's a handout as well, good.
They can follow along with them. Yeah, see, it's still doing it. Can you read?
Yes, I'm fine. Before we discuss what you see on the slide, we need to address Perkins Eastman's claim that a 95-foot-wide floor plate could not be accommodated on the existing garage. First, let's look at the zoning. A minimal zoning variance will be, will allow the 90-foot floor plate. Our zoning expert, Joe Tribisono, has letter, which we've submitted, states that a variance for an exception only to the rear yard equivalent would allow this essential dimension, and there are no other variance required to achieve this. Just want to point out, to take this with me, that we're talking about the area of, of the extension over the garage, and that you're looking at exactly the same plan as in the Perkins Eastman study. Also, also, a 60-foot courtyard between the existing building and the new wing is also not required as stated by Perkins Eastman. The remaining 45 feet of open space between the garage build and Wesley House is an adequate open area to satisfy the residential requirements for light and air. That's to the Wesley House, which is a residential building. There are no other zoning issues in the garage build R6 zone. Second, it is clear that the existing garage was built for and can support a five-story structure. We just mentioned this. Above will be less expensive to build, of course, because the foundations are in place. The Severn letter provided by Perkins Eastman clearly states that five-story structure can be built upon the garage without any retro... can be built upon the garage without any retrofit or major structural alterations. The first floor, as shown in the Perkins Eastman plan, which is a very tall floor, will allow all of the structure, the accommodating transfer beams, and the structure allowing for a hospital operating floor that has no vibrations, all within the first-floor ceiling. Third, by redesigning and relocating some of the mechanical ducts and relocating the egress stair, the garage would effectively be directly accessible to all functions adjacent to it on all floors, the same as shown here on the critical OR floor. We note how these elements have been moved to the garage. I'll just point to it. And the PACU, and they will function very, very well in plan, much better than in the Perkins Eastman scheme. So as you can see, the most significant floor is the OR. As they've stated from the beginning, that's what established the floor plate. The operating unit and the PACU after it, shown with exactly the same location as the suite in the Perkins Eastman proposal, where their stated floor plan dimensions, this clearly indicates that once the minor variance to the rear yard equivalent is granted, for the garage build, this critical facility can be reoriented over the garage. Security and sterility in that facility will be maintained. It will be a vastly improved circulation system. How could the separation of the OR and PACU be more efficient? Next slide. This next schematic shows exactly how the hospital could be, how the center could be rearranged. Methodist claims that building over the garage would not satisfy the center's programmatic needs because it would be functionally and operationally segregated from the rest of the facility. We've just demonstrated that the OR can be integrated with its own related facilities, the PACU. This is true of the entire new construction. Each floor will have immediate access from the garage to whatever is adjacent to it. It can be designed as one thing. References made to the garage build approach as being deficient as the complying development, that's incorrect, since the garage build incorporates the same elevator cores as the Perkins Eastman scheme, and both elevators connect to both buildings. By integrating the area over the garage, we have improved the circulation to the entire facility. This is particularly true, of course, on the operating floor, which we've demonstrated. Circulation through this area from the eastern core to the western core can be separate from the sterile OR suite. Again, pointing at the drawing. This is the western elevator core. This is the western elevator core. This is the eastern elevator core. It would be so simple for this core if it went all the way to the ground, which it does not in the Perkins Eastman scheme, to provide access to all of the hospital staff, the doctors, directly to all of those facilities which they are mainly directing towards. And it would be, just as in the Perkins and Eastman scheme, easy for all visitors, all patients, to maintain access through the east. This is something that really, I think, that is missing entirely from their thinking on how to design this facility. When this integrated scheme, numerous functions could be relocated, some to the new garage building wings such as materials maintenance, building services adjacent to the loading dock. Those are two facilities that have no relation to operations of the rest of the medical facilities. Locker rooms, laboratories, sterile supply, cancer center, women's center, special operations procedure, all could be located to the western core. That's what we're showing in the diagram. All of these serve very effectively by the western elevator core while the remaining clinical institutes are on the east and accessible from the eastern elevator core. We note that the original Perkins Eastman plan includes approximately 70,000 to 80,000 square feet for these institutes. The garage builds incorporates that size and that number. The top two floors of this scheme just presented will be all of the other facilities, reducing the building, once you do build this much, you will have reduced the buildings by two complete floors, reducing it by approximately 45 to 50 feet in height. So, benefits, final one. The benefits to sum up. Providing required large 95-foot floor plate to meet NYM's stated program could be achieved. Better use of the full site potential using the FAR of the garage. A substantial amount of the building's height would be reduced overall and across the R6, R6B, and R7B zones, and shifted onto the garage wing. A significantly lesser variance would be necessary to construct the garage build. So it is better contextually and more in line with the character of the neighborhood. You're looking at what is removed from the top of this facility. All of what is red will then be shifted onto the garage end of the building, and it will function just as well as Perkins Eastman thinks their scheme will. The garage approach clearly demonstrates that Methodist's application does not seek the minimum variance necessary. This comparison demonstrates a reduction in the bulk between NYM's current design and the garage build approach. We hope this makes our point clear.
Thank you. All right. I believe the team has a few additional speakers, if that's correct. Each person will be given three minutes. Yes. Please go ahead.
Yeah, please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is David Abramson. Based on over 40 years of professional architectural practice, working within historic districts and with old buildings, I will provide testimony regarding shortcomings of the design for the proposed Center for Community Health. Based on my review of materials submitted by the hospital in support of its variance request, including the BSA application and environmental assessment statement, I request that the variance be denied for these reasons. Most significantly, the design of the proposed building alters the essential character of the neighborhood, and this is inconsistent with criteria for granting a variance. The proposed design doesn't satisfy the commitment made by Methodist Hospital in the memorandum of agreement dated September 15, 2009, between the hospital and Park Slope Civic Council to endeavor to make every effort to preserve and add to the sense of place as defined by the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Park Slope's buildings evidence a range of features which establish both an overall cohesiveness as well as individual distinctiveness. While I recognize the architects' attempt to glancingly allude to some of these features, the proposed building design and size would alter the essential character of the neighborhood. What are the features of the existing neighborhood character that the proposed design does not respect? First and foremost, Park Slope's building fronts, almost without exception, have setbacks of varying distances from the property lines. This includes single-family row houses, apartment buildings, religious structures, and even the hospital's older 8th Avenue East Pavilion. Methodist's proposed building destroys the setback by building to the property lines on 8th Avenue and 6th Street. Their building lacks the iconic green spaces provided by front-wall setbacks which allow space for tree roots and greenery to spread. Second, Park Slope's sense of place is characterized by an array of scale-creating features which break down the mass of each building to a more individual scale, which are lacking in the proposed building. These include window surrounds and sills, brick patterns, well-defined first-floor entrances, color variations in the facade, which also playfully move back and forth to the pedestrian eye, and relationships between the solids of the walls and the voids of the windows and doors. Methodist's proposed four-story glass window wall at the 8th Avenue building entrance has an unfamiliar height, planner, character, and scale, and would stand out as a highly illuminated, commercial beacon, simply without precedent. The proposed building's first-floor windows create a relentless procession of institutional, storefront-like windows which are devoid of characteristic articulation of materials and detail, which primarily would provide views along 8th Avenue into a corridor. My final point recalls that the approval process for the recently-built 7th Avenue Methodist Medical Pavilion mandated a New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission review, which was built into the BSA approval for the pavilion. The historic character of the neighborhood, amply chronicled in the hospital's environmental assessment statement and application, begs for careful consideration of the LPC, and I strongly urge a required Landmarks Preservation Commission review as part of your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker.
Hello, my name is Beth Morrow, and I've lived next to Methodist for 16 years, and I'm here to ask the board to impose concrete, meaningful conditions on any approval of variance by requiring the hospital to adhere to a traffic mitigation plan that is developed with the involvement from the DOT, surrounding schools, and the community. It's appropriate to consider traffic issues because increased gridlock pollution and resulting traffic concerns, safety concerns, would alter the essential character of our neighborhood. This issue is of heightened importance because the hospital has not acknowledged a responsibility to mitigate the impact of their anticipated new traffic, and because they have failed to successfully manage their current traffic. And I present slides as a visual framework for understanding our concerns. There is an upper limit to the amount of hospital program that this neighborhood can absorb, and we believe that we have already reached that limit. These narrow streets were built before cars and trucks, and they are not getting wider. There are no major arteries leading to and from the hospital to alleviate the impact of a major increase in cars, trucks, taxis, car service, cars, ambulants, and ambulances. In this picture, behind the red truck is an ambulance stuck behind traffic with an emergency patient in the back, lights and siren on, right in front of my house. This happens daily. This is dangerous, and as I've noted before, what is bad for neighbors is bad for the hospital and its patients. Making the tight situation worse, the existing ambulance dock is unable to handle current ambulance traffic, and here you see ambulances backed up on 7th Street and a patient being unloaded in the street, which are both common occurrences. And yet, as the hospital puts forward plans to invest unknown millions of dollars, it doesn't appear to be addressing this big problem. Again, next slide. The tight situation is made more dangerous by the design of the 7th Avenue truck loading dock where trucks cross the busy sidewalk, usually backing up, as you can see here. And again, the hospital is not investing to address this problem, though further growth of the hospital threatens to make things worse even if they build this new internal dock. Next slide. Here you see students passing the 7th Avenue loading dock. There are nearly 5,000 students attending schools within a few blocks of the proposed facility, where the hospital's expansion will add 100,000 cars at least and 6,500 trucks each year, not including construction vehicles. And at the last hearing, you asked the hospital to outline plans for addressing safety concerns regarding students. In response, the hospital deflects responsibility and says it will have basically no impact at 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM, and that Brad Lander's task force can address it. Though, Lander's task force meets infrequently and has never discussed student safety. That is inadequate and provides a good example of why we neighbors are worried. In sum, any expansion of the hospital must hold them accountable and be conditioned on effective traffic mitigation strategies.
Thank you. The next speaker.
Good morning, Paul. My name is Norman Mintz. I'm a professional urban designer and historic preservationist, and live within close proximity of the hospital. Okay. What happens when you have to deal with tens of thousands of additional vehicles in a neighborhood with narrow streets like this? The result is chaotic. So the question becomes, are we to expect even more of a traffic problem? Presuming the hospital's figures are accurate, at the outset, the new building will easily generate over 100,000 new passenger vehicles annually, on top of the current number of vehicles using the already clogged streets. These numbers can be expected to grow five, 10, and 20 years out. Even without the new facility, traffic at Methodist is rising exponentially. Importantly, these numbers do not account for the magnified impact of a single car where drivers circle the neighborhood to find parking, amplifying the impact of each car. In addition, ambulances and cough services hover endlessly around the hospital with engines on, whether they be circling the hospital, idling while they wait. So what can be done? The community would like to propose some mitigation measures. First, significantly reduce the size and scale of the expansion. Second, the BSA should require that adequate planning is done. When Philip Habib did his study, the hospital did not yet present a complete program, so his findings were based upon insufficient information. In addition, one must realize that the Habib study was commissioned by the hospital. What is needed is a new, independent traffic study based upon adequate and timely information. Planning needs to involve relevant city agencies to ensure that it is done properly, and any new study needs to include genuine input from the community and neighboring schools. Third, the board should attach meaningful preconditions to any approval that holds the hospital accountable. This includes mitigating their traffic impact in the future as well as in the present. It is a known fact to those, like myself, who live near the hospital, that New York Methodist is solely negligent in enforcing or monitoring by their own staff any of the posted regulations, including no standing signs that are adjacent to their own property. In conclusion, I'm sorry. Furthermore, the hospital's inability to manage its current impact highlights the need for significant oversight by any expansion that is approved. In conclusion, the nearly 500,000-square-foot facility that the hospital proposes will generate traffic that detracts and overwhelms the essential character of the surrounding historic residential neighborhood and places thousands of, I'm sorry, thousands of schoolchildren at risk. As such, we ask the board to impose meaningful conditions on any approval of our variance, including requiring the hospital to adhere to a traffic mitigation plan that is developed with involvement from the DOT, surrounding schools, and the community, realizing, of course, that the best and most logical way to achieve the result is to reduce the size and scale of the proposed facility.
Mr. Mintz, your time is up.
The New York Methodist will play a significant role in keeping in mind that they are still, the hospital is part of the treasury neighborhood, but that we call this neighborhood our home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mintz. The next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Schaffer, S-H-A-F-F-E-R. I appeared before the board at the February hearing. I'm a lawyer, longtime Park Slope resident, and was the Assistant Commissioner for Regulatory Policy and Enforcement at the Department of Buildings from 2007 to 2010. When I was last here, I think it's interesting that Methodist started out today, and really their exclusive presentation so far has to do with traffic and parking issues. What I focused on last time was the Table G1 that they submitted, and that they have resubmitted now in exactly the same form, with exactly the same numbers, and with the exact same lack of support, despite the fact that the board asked for the support the last time they were here. Now, I'll just go very quickly through what Table G1, it's the summary of affected outpatient facilities, and on the far-right-hand corner, it shows the increment over 2013 existing visits, and that's where you get the number, supposedly, at the bottom, that says there'll be an increase of 102,245 annual visits. And this includes things like 2,394 additional visits to phlebotomy, 9,154 visits for radiation oncology, 2,652 visits to orthopedic faculty practice. Where do these numbers come from? You can't tell, because once again, the source at the bottom is listed as New York Methodist Hospital. If you compare, if these numbers are wrong, and there's no way to tell whether they're right or wrong, well, let's suppose these numbers are off by a factor of 10, that in fact, the real numbers are 1/10, these numbers, and in fact, there'll only be 10,000 annual visits. annual visits. Well, that would certainly change the nature of any building that was allegedly needed, and the, change any parking analysis, near quality analysis. Let's assume, in fact, the real number is five times the amount here. Well, that too would change the parking analysis, near quality analysis. However, there's no way to know where these numbers come from, and when I spoke to Mr. Habib's associate, who spoke here 20 minutes ago, he told me that making their projections, they get their numbers from Methodist Hospital. They don't question where they come from. If you look at the other tables that Methodist submits in, as part of their EAS, they cite the source. You can find out where they get the decibel levels for, excuse me, for amplified rock music, because under the sources, there it cites two textbooks on acoustics as to where those are from. They cite nothing as to where the numbers of anticipated new visits come from. As such, there's no basis whatsoever for the boards to make a determination as to whether the air quality study done and submitted is correct, or whether the parking study done, or traffic study done, is, has any basis who are correct, or whether, in fact, the building they are seeking, in fact, with the variance they are seeking, seeks the minimum variance necessary, because there's, they have not submitted anything to support the numbers they have given to the board. They have not submitted any numbers and any background for their, for their programmatic needs. All they have shown is physically where those programmatic needs will be located in the building they want to build with a variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minz. The next speaker. Yes, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Eve Gartner. Commissioners, even if this is a Cornell case, I would ask the BSA to be aware of the distinction between the analysis required to comply with seeker and the analysis required to be eligible for the rebuttable Cornell presumption. In Cornell, the Court of Appeals said that the controlling consideration for the presumption must always be the overall impact on the public's welfare. That's a presum-, there's a presumption that this educational institution, if in fact it is an educational institution, will have a beneficial impact on the community. But Methodist hasn't given you the information that you need to determine whether the impact of this will be beneficial or deleterious, and thus whether it's eligible for the Cornell presumption. Methodist has failed to quantify or analyze the impacts of the increased emissions of carbon monoxide and particulate matter. They say these are not of concern, but since these are both toxic elements that are emitted from the burning of fossil fuels and from vehicles, they might not be of concern to Methodist, but they're of concern to the community, and they're of concern to the parents whose kids go to the schools next door. So with respect to carbon monoxide, they don't do a quantified assessment, because on page H2 of the EAS, they say that this facility is not expected to significantly alter the traffic conditions. Now, we've heard a lot about this, but I have a basic question, which is, if there's not going to be a lot of traffic coming here, why do they need 300,000 square feet of program? Today, they said, well, 54% of the traffic that's coming already comes, it just goes to other buildings that are part of the hospital's facility. But that's, and if that's right, and it appears to be, that they're shifting services from one hospital building to another hospital building, clearly that's going to empty space in the existing buildings, and eventually, those spaces will be filled with services, and more patients will come to fill those services. So this really is a displacement. They're claiming there's not a lot of new traffic here. That's because they're shifting services, but they're not taking account in their traffic analysis, the new patients that are coming to fill their existing buildings. So this is a problem. With respect to particulate matter, there's an even more obvious problem. On page H4 of the EAS, they say that an assessment of particulate matter isn't warranted, because those, that pollutant is mostly associated with trucks, and especially diesel. And they make the preposterous assertion on page H4 that this development won't increase truck traffic. But today, they told us that there'll be 30 trucks a day coming to this new facility, to the loading dock. So I don't understand that at all. And in addition to that, there's obviously going to be significant truck traffic associated with the demolition and the construction. There's 16 buildings being demolished. The debris is going to be needed, it's going to be carted off for years. They say there are 23 trucks a day during the peak demolition period. The final point is that this commission should not grant a variance based on a vague condition of some future mitigation. It should require specific mitigation before any variances are granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana Gradis. I live on Sixth Street, near Methodist Hospital. I have actually been a volunteer at Methodist Hospital for about 11 years. My dog and I were instrumental in starting the therapy dog program there. That said, I'm very concerned about the expansion of the hospital. I'm in agreement with all the concerns that were expressed. To voice some of my thoughts, I've decided to write and read a poem. And I shall begin. "The years I've lived in Park Slope add up to 42, during which time I've seen the neighborhood renew. Life in this slope has brought so many joys. It's been a wonderful place to raise our girls and boys. But alas, a threat has insidiously grown to all slopers, whether we lease or own. Methodist Hospital has formulated plans to expand, but in a way that deserves reprimand. It's on a scale that's not really fair, way too big and tall for the neighborhood to bear. We slopers treasure our quality of life, but with problems, this project will be rife. Massive size, shadows, traffic and pollution. Surely, there's a better solution. So please, Methodist, be a better neighbor. We will help you with your labor. To come up with a plan that benefits us all, with a new building that's not so tall, that serves both your and the community's need, our valid concerns, you must heed." Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Staff, my name, my name is Dr. Marvin Suporin. I've lived in Park Slope for 41 years, and in two months, my grandchild will be born at New York Methodist. So I want it to be a successful and excellent hospital. Unfortunately, their plans are not about providing excellent healthcare in Brooklyn, it's about maximizing their profit. And unfortunately, they've not refrained from giving partial and misinformation throughout their defense of this indefensible project. Even today, when they spoke to you about the trucks coming to Sixth Street, and talking about them unloading within a construction zone, it's as if the trucks would appear by magic. How do they get to Sixth Street in the first place? A street that's so narrow that when the hospital had to do some more construction on its existing building, they couldn't create the required pedestrian walkway, and had to shut an entire sidewalk. Where are the trucks going to go when they exit the construction? They talk about, from day one, that construction workers would not be parking on the site, but in almost a year, they've still not found a place for the off-site parking. They keep referring to the Brad Lander Task Force as their answer to traffic mitigation. I'm a member of that task force. The task force has not met in four and a half months, and the only thing that they've, that the hospital has done in response to those meetings is further reduce the size of their garage, which will save them money, give them more space, excuse me, but, which they're not reallocating to lowering the height of the building. Stuart Klein was right in terms of saying that what Methodist is going to do with the new ambulatory care center is not a school or an educational institution. Every business hires interns. So is Goldman Sachs also a medical institution? Is it also a college? Methodist is doing nothing different than any other for-profit business by having interns at the site. Moreover, as you've heard neighbors say constantly, Methodist is consistently being unresponsive except for their pursuit of profit. They've not been responsive to the poor. Less than one-third of 1% of their revenue is spent on charity care. That's 33 cents out of every $100 that they take in. They're not, they've not been responsive, as you've heard, to community concerns about traffic, not just about the projected building, but for years and years from the existing building, nor have they been responsive to concerns about pollution. They weren't responsive to the community board's call for them to reduce the building. They didn't even listen to the BSA when you ask them for a detailed plan for securing the safety of children. So the only way they will listen is if you deny their variances and force them to create a building that fits into the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker.
I'm Terri Baum, and I live in Park Slope, Brooklyn. I would like to talk to you about the letter sent to the BSA from Public School 39, an elementary school with 380 children and two blocks from Methodist. To my knowledge, the hospital has not spoken to many of the affected schools about its building plans, PS 39, MS 51, and Bean Sprouts, a nursery school with several Park Slope locations. Here are some excerpts of the letter written to the BSA by the PS 39 parent body, which was submitted for the record. "Children in the area need you to help act as their voice to ensure their support and protection. The community would like the hospital to address the health and safety concerns of the children who attend school in the vicinity of the proposed construction. As parents, we are concerned about traffic congestion and safety, environmental pollution from the construction, demolition, diesel emissions, and from increased traffic. Please make sure due diligence is done so the community is protected. Signed from the eight executive members of PS 39 Parent Association." Separately, on February 11, 2014, a Methodist senior vice president stated here that Methodist needs every inch of square feet for this project. Yet, last week, the hospital announced it would reduce the size of the project. Is it possible that this immaterial concession be timed to gain board approval and to distract us from major issues and shortcomings in the proposal? So let's take a step back. What is the big picture? What are three important points that we have to keep in mind? Methodist wants to build a health facility that is at a scale with the neighborhood and surrounding historic buildings, that will, without a doubt, materially change the essential nature of the neighborhood. Methodist is requesting zoning variances for its proposed site, when several years ago, it was afforded special zoning treatment by being carved out of the historic district in which it resides. It is unprecedented to build a commercial tower in a landmark residential district. Have you heard of this being done before? Is it possible to safely build on narrow streets a tower with two schools adjacent to the proposed site? There are other outstanding questions, among them, how will the large number of additional vehicles be assimilated? What are the safest truck routes throughout the neighborhood? At the least, a traffic mitigation plan, student safeguards, and air quality data are needed. We hope Methodist will be forthcoming and adequately address all of the community's safety concerns. Ultimately, as we recommended before, our strong recommendation is for Methodist to substantially scale back the size of the project."
Thank you. The next speaker.
My name is Philippa Garson. My family and I have lived on Fifth Street, adjacent to the John Jay, for the past four years. I work from home, and I'm attuned to the rhythms of the street. Barely an hour goes by when a double-parked car or truck is not snarling the traffic outside. Things have only got worse with the closure of several left turns of Fourth Avenue, and our narrow street has become a thoroughfare for traffic moving east. It is bizarre to me that the hospital, which professes to be serving the people of Brooklyn, has done nothing to make the nearby subway station accessible to compromised patients. Furthermore, we have a proposed truck depot across the street from us, which will see upwards of 30 trucks a day entering, idling, and continuing up Fifth Street. I do not believe the environmental impact of these trucks on 2,000 children schooling mere meters away has been considered. It's bad enough trying to walk along Seventh Avenue with trucks reversing from the existing depot, but at least this is a wide avenue, a main traffic route, that unlike Fifth Street, is not adjacent to schools. Studies show that the diesel fuel that powers trucks can spew 100 to 200 times more soot into the air than gasoline engines, and the exhaust is so toxic that the World Health Organization classified it as a carcinogen. Countrywide, there's increasing awareness of the toxic effects of traffic pollution on children, and many states have outlawed the building of new schools nearer than 500 feet from busy roads. Studies in Rhode Island, Cincinnati, San Francisco, and New York all point to the toxic offensive effects of traffic pollution, and links to the rising incidence of childhood asthma. A 2006 study in Rhode Island, not in my schoolyard, recommended that schools be set back 2,500 feet where diesel, gasoline, oxygen, and other combustible or poisonous gases are transported. Already, Park Slope has higher asthma rates than would be expected. Many believe this is a result of the emissions from the hospital. My youngest child, who has a chronic health condition, and I both suffer from asthma, I dread to think of the toll this new construction will take on her health. But what is of greater concern is the health of the 2,000 other children who school just a stone's throw from the proposed construction. What plans does the hospital have to curtail the environmental pollution from demolition, construction, diesel emissions, and increased traffic? Another major concern is safety. Last year, there was a tragic incident on Prospect Park West, the death of Sammy Epstein, who was run over by a truck, that has heightened the fears of parents in Park Slope. Our children walk everywhere, to and from the more than 10 schools and preschools in the close vicinity. What kind of safety plan does the hospital envisage to protect our children from trucks reversing and idling on Fifth Street, or the many more cars and traffic congestion the development will bring? So far, I think what we've heard today is the hospital is paying lip service to our concerns about traffic and safety. I ask the BSA to think very carefully before granting the hospital the variances it requires to build an aggressive development in the heart of Park Slope community. There are reasons why these zoning laws are in place, and they are good reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker.
I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, sixty-ten, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one hundred. I am worried about all of the things, including lots of accessory things, which weren't mentioned or so, but mainly, I am worried that this building, this massive building, will be ugly. The, now, the iconic buildings of Park Slope are four-story brownstones, limestones, and small apartment buildings. Methodist says, no, it can't do this, it can't make it, you know, it wouldn't work with, with that. So started looking around Park Slope, you know, what buildings are bigger than that but fit in. Eighth Avenue does have a number of quite lovely six-story apartment buildings, some of them, you know, definitely good size, and starting to see, you know, what is it about these buildings that make them fit in with the, the brownstone, with their brownstone neighbors? And my handout has pretty pictures of them. What makes them fit in, they say, is the variety they offer. There is variety in their windows, variety in their brickwork, variety in their rooflines. That seems to be, that strikes me as one of the really, really important things, is the rooflines. Their doorways are either, are large, ornamented, they're either recessed in some, you know, great mysterious you go into it, or they're extended from, from the facade. Most of these have fairly romantic ornamentation, but, you know, if, if you do not, I like castles and knights, but if you are not into castles, knights, and squiggles, there is, there are examples in there, 148-3, where, where their beautiful things are done with a strictly abstract right angles, but there is, again, variety in the windows, variety in the, in the roofline. In contrast, we look at the hospital buildings, and we look at the medical pavilion, or the Rite Aid building, as it is unaffectionately known. We see a flat roofline, a flat facade, every brick looks like every other brick. This is on the last page, Hannah. The doorway can hardly be even seen from across the street. Now, they have gotten, matched the colors with John Jay High School, a magnificent building with a magnificent doorway, and they are only five stories, so I would put them in the not horrible class. them in the not horrible class, but Methodist is proud of this building. They think it's beautiful, and the thought that, you know, it said it's not horrible, but the thought that they might build something like—as dull as this, almost double the height—is really gives me nightmares. There are some taller buildings along Eighth Avenue, but none of them have the—none of them go block to block, except for a final one, and I would love them to copy it—if they made—if they cloned the Armory, which is a big building and goes from—
Thank you. The next speaker?
Chair, Mr. Navatson, and commissioners, my name is Andrea Stewart. I live half a block east of where the hospital plans to build the Center for Community Health. I moved there in 2000, choosing Park Slope because it had the same neighborhood feel I had in the West Village from which I was moving. It had a street life where neighbors sit out on their stoops and say hello to each other. It had low-rise buildings that lent to the neighborhood feel and narrow tree-lined streets. When I moved here in 2000, I had no idea what exactly the history of the neighborhood was. I chose it only because it had that character. My building, I found out later, was built in the 1920s, not quite as old as I had thought, given its rattling windows and old pipes. Little did I suspect that the brownstones on the corner of my block, on the corner of Eighth Avenue and Fifth Street, were the earliest buildings in the immediate vicinity. They date almost to the same time as the hospital itself, 116 years old. I've brought a map here from 1898 that shows the grid of Park Slope, and you can see that—it's tiny—you can see that the buildings are in pink. All the other area is unbuilt. You can also see that there's a lot of blank area. Here is the hospital, and it's in a traditional institutional shape, taking a block 1084. 1086, sorry. And here, one block away, is a lot of nothing, except for the five brownstones right here—excuse me, you want to take them? I'm headed right back, but—five brownstones on the corner that the hospital plans to destroy. Imagine what must have been like to be the first building in a newly-developed neighborhood. Well, why imagine? Because here in this photo, taken from 1900, is Eighth Avenue facing Fourth Street in the foreground, and just beyond that is Fifth Street, where those—you can see those historic brownstones right there that Methodist plans to destroy. I know that the hospital owns these buildings, and they have the right to destroy them, due to some negotiations they made to exclude themselves from the landmark district. However, the hospital in those negotiations did promise to maintain the essential character of the neighborhood should they build in their exempted zone. In fact, the hospital has been promising this for decades, that they would endeavor to preserve the character of the neighborhood. In 1966, Methodist was part of a coalition to designate Park Slope as a neighborhood conservation district and work to preserve the neighborhood's integrity, and pressed officials such as yourselves to enforce the building codes. What has changed since then, I ask? In 2009, they promised to the Park Slope Civic Council that any building should blend in contextually with surrounding adjacent and nearby historic properties to the extent practicable, and that architectural design of any construction or development of the property shall make every effort to preserve and to add to the sense of place.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. The next speaker? Any more speakers? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Ed Stickrad. I've been a resident of Park Slope for 24 years. I live on Seventh Street. And Madam Chairman, at the last meeting that we were at, I know you suggested or requested that the hospital present wider views of—instead of just their building, a streetscape view. I didn't see any of that here today. And I think that would have really been helpful, to see their building in that wider context that you would ask for. And also, the other comments that I heard today was that in responding to some of those earlier requests, they submitted the very same material, which was very well-stated. So, you know, I don't think you're getting what you're asking for. Another element that bothers me is that when we speak of heights of buildings, stories, you know, when we're speaking of the brownstones, there's about maybe 10, 10 feet per floor. When they use the same term, "Oh, it's going to drop down to four stories on the street level," well, four stories to them, it's 15 feet per floor or higher. So, you know, that's—not matching bananas to bananas. So, along with that, and the—it was made reference to how the construction is going to take place, and you see the one block again of Sixth Street, but those trucks come from somewhere, and they come from Prospect Park West, and they'll come down Sixth Street. All of the traffic now on Prospect Park West, I would say, you could count 75% of it in the morning, because I walk the dog frequently and cross the corner of Sixth Street, the traffic turns and comes down Sixth Street going to the hospital. That's a regular route for traffic to the hospital now. Add on to that this additional construction and ongoing traffic is going to be just impossible, as has been mentioned, all the other streets are so naked—so narrow as well. And we've—as neighbors have an ongoing, almost battle with the hospital about the Seventh Avenue and Seventh Street corner, where the trucks come to deliver, the ambulances keep coming, blocking the corners, the ambulance park anywhere along Seventh Avenue or the side streets that they want. There's no designated area for them, other than on, I think, Sixth Street, which they never use, so they park illegally everywhere else. So, that problem is not going away. It's only getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, actually, the applicant did, in their submission—I think it was probably—I believe, March 14 submission—they did provide additional information on streetscapes and views in the surrounding area, so it's in the record.
Good afternoon, Highness of Earth. I was originally given a copy of Phil Habib's traffic study, which in the first paragraph specifically said that it wasn't done in accordance with the SECRE manual. I didn't know the context of that, and of course, I wrote a letter and had about 30, 30 or 40 bullet points of—after reviewing the document of inaccuracies and other items that were eloquently pointed out by a lot of the members here at the Board, not understanding the context of the screens and the future no-action-with-action scenarios. However, in accordance with the SECRE manual, any construction over three years requires a construction analysis to be prepared in accordance with SECRE, and the construction analysis gets involved into traffic, parking, pedestrian, safety, air quality, and noise, which the analysis that we reviewed didn't include.
Okay, so, some of the comments that you gave in your papers to us was because you didn't understand the context?
We didn't understand the no-action scenario.
I see, but your recent comment is because they have a construction period which is greater than three years.
Greater than three years, in accordance with the manual. Any construction over two years—I'm sorry, not three years—over two years requires a construction analysis, which includes a lot of those categories that are being discussed here today.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Any more speakers? Honors, Ms. Wagner.
Please restate your name for the record.
Itla Wagner, and we'd like to ask Michael Quattler and then Frank Gunther to respond to the presentation by Preserve Park Slope.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Board. My name is Michael Quattler. I'm the principal of Michael Quattler and Associates in New York City. I appear at the request of New York Methodist Hospital. I have reviewed the garage build alternative proposed by Preserve Park Slope and to assess the extent to the zoning waivers that it would require. The materials included with the proposal do not provide specific floor area numbers or floor-to-floor height, at least not that I could see. With respect to the latter, I have assumed floor-to-floor heights of 20 feet at the ground floor and 14 feet at the floors above, really based on their assumption of the engineer's report about the garage and the overbuild that they had assumed 14 feet. So, first, the Preserve Park Slope proposal requires nearly all of the same waivers as the hospital's proposal, and a whole series of new ones, which are unique to the Preserve Park Slope alternative, what they call the overbuild. The waivers include—and this is for both the Methodist and PPS—the waivers include lot coverage, rear yards, rear yard equivalents, and distribution of floor area. With respect to height, both the alternative proposal and the hospital's modified proposal fully comply with the Height and Setback Regulations in the R7B district. The R6B portion of the alternative proposal does not comply with the applicable maximum base height, maximum building height. But I should note that there is a noncompliance with the—in this is in the R6B—that there is an additional—to additional noncompliances with the maximum building height and the maximum base height in the R6B district in the Preserve Park Slope submission, but we have included them here, which is what you can see right there. Second, although the alternative proposal has a lower building height than the hospital's proposal within the R6B, its upper floors are closer to the Fifth Street line than is proposed by the hospital. Interestingly, most of the bulk reduction in the proposed alternative ends up on Sixth Street, which is really internal to the hospital, where the impact of that height is relative —is not really particularly significant, given the height and scale of the existing hospital buildings, which bear no resemblance whatsoever to a row house. The Preserve Park Slope alternative also requires three additional waivers for the west end through lot within which the existing garage is located, and these are not minor. The most important one is the reduction of a rear yard equivalent from 60 feet to 45 feet. Having worked on some of the other variances for ambulatory care facilities which have appeared before the Board, this is a very significant change, because the rear yard is also part of the state's multiple dwelling law, and there are actual residences, people living in Wesley Hall, who will be affected by a substandard distance between buildings. The second is that the lot coverage of the portion of the zoning lot exceeds the maximum of 65%, in fact, by quite a lot. And then, third, the building does not provide the required minimum distance between buildings on floors containing dwelling units. So, notwithstanding what has been said, actually, the PPS proposal requires more variances than the New York Methodist—than the New York Methodist one, although, to be fair, some of the degrees of the variance are a little bit less in the PPS proposal, because the heights are a little bit lower. But nonetheless, whatever you say about this—it's filling in a rear yard, so whether it's a little lower, a little bit higher, is a matter of degree of the variance, but the fundamental variance is no rear yard equivalent at that location in order to connect pieces of the hospital. And that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Quattler? All right. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Frank Gunther. I'm a principal of Perkins Eastman, the architects being quoted earlier today. And my purpose now is to provide some response to what we had seen previously with regard to the Preserve Park Slope alternatives to the project. I'm going to limit my comments to just a few, in virtue and view of the time and the magnitude of the issues before us. These are the subjects I'm going to talk about. First of all, the—we have looked at their plans carefully, and we've looked at them in terms of the key points to see how it might work with the building. And my contention is, through all these, is that the new building does have problems and creates some greater difficulties for providing the building that would meet the programmatic needs. In circulation, the extensive addition at the west end over the garage produces a very long building, which is difficult for patients to maneuver, especially patients who are weak and frail, such as those coming for cancer, or those coming—for cancer infusions, or those coming for surgery. And the distance shown here from the elevator core, which is, as we had proposed initially, at the east side of the site, and the far reaches in the far west end are certainly excessive and greater than should be the case. Our attempt and our design was to put the core to the center of the building, access via a controlled entrance point at the ground level, and then minimize the travel distance that anybody would travel throughout the building. So, this is a problem. The second issue I'd like to look at is circulation. Good planning practice separates the movement of patients who have frailties and their caregivers from the back-of-house support programs that go on within the building. Our plans provide two circulation paths, one at the south side of the building, facing Sixth Street, that is reached by coming off the elevators, going to receiving and waiting areas, and circulating east and west across the building to the different components. This plan produces a crossing of the back-of-house traffic, the material delivery, the garbage, the red bag disposal, things like that, with patients who will be crossing into sensitive patient care areas. And we think that would be a problem, as illustrated by this overlay. By the way, these are overlays that we have made to the drawings provided by Park Slope. Structural conflicts. This is the first of two slides on this subject, and I would like to begin by pointing out that the area shaded with the red dots on the left side is an area that is impossible to build a scheme that they're proposing. This portion of their plan is in conflict with the entrance to the garage. To build it, you have to take away the entrance to the garage and would not return unless you put something else in that location. The red square to the right of that represents a general suggestion by them, either there or in the vertical gray bar, of a second elevator core that would function for the building. It is very important for the safety of patients and the confidentiality of information that goes on, that the access to the building be controlled, that there not be two separate entrances to these buildings. And our concept with the core on the east side is compromised by another core on the left side. And we're talking about people who arrive in the building, staff and patients. But we're also talking about delivery of materials. And the suggestion by the Preserve Park Slope group is that the loading dock and the receiving areas, as you see in the tan on the left side of this drawing, would be such that you have to traverse to the right through a core, which is in tight conflict with the garage and the circulation space to the building. So, we have a vertical circulation in conflict with a horizontal movement at the grade level, which is a very important point. This drawing also represents truly, accurately, our drop-off area. And our drop-off, our concept, our design, has drop-off on the site, away from the street, so that people come in, are picked up, dropped off, go to parking and return from parking to pick up people who are leaving, are within that central driveway, within the middle of the building. We originally had intended that to exit to Fifth Street, and we—in response to the community, we made U-turns possible in that. By putting this core into this left side of this circulation area, we constrict and frustrate the ability to get into the garage beneath and to let that happen, and we certainly would not want traffic to go back out onto Fifth Street. And the circulation between the components of the building would not be possible under this scheme. The next slide follows that description of structure. Yes, it is possible to build five floors above the parking structure. However, as one of the gentlemen said earlier, there are vibration-isolation requirements for a surgical floor, which is on the third level of this proposed building, and you would need to put substantial structure to do that. Secondly, the module of spacing that relates to that 95-foot dimension referred to in the width of the unit, and the spacing of surgical procedure rooms, operating rooms, if you will, and support spaces for that, is a different spacing pattern than the garage, which is below. The addition of a building over the garage, also by virtue of its size and its separation from the rest of the building, would necessitate additional mechanical equipment at the top of that building. We've shown here what we believe would be a boiler plant that would be necessary up there, with necessary stacks and so forth, with discharges at a lower elevation than would be in the design that we had proposed to begin with. Working way down to the bottom of the building, there would need to be a transition from the structure of the building above the garage to the garage. the structure of the building above the garage to the garage. The reconfiguration of columns necessitated by the programs above in conflict with the spacing of the garage columns below would require this transfer, and in our estimation would require a reinforcing of the foundations because of these point loads and the increased load put onto the building. It's not simply a generic five-level addition, it's a specific addition to serve certain programs. Okay, next. The programming and the planning of the building is at the heart of the reason for this building and the reason for our design. And Perkins Eastman has many, many years' experience in medical planning and design of many projects, some of whom were referenced by other speakers here this morning. The development of a workable surgical suite, and this is ambulatory care surgery, is predicated on several facts. Number one, that a patient who arrives should be received and protected, brought into that cocoon of care that allows them to be treated properly within the building. The alternate shown here, prepared by Preserve Park Slope, removes a waiting room for surgery. There's no place to receive the people. It assumes they would merely go to a waiting area that's further to the east, which is serving the medical care practices. That doesn't work. But also, it's reduced an area, and small, so small that you cannot fit in a pre-op area within the building. It would require a circulation, rather than the black circulation I'm showing here, a circulation illustrated in blue, that frustrates the movement and care of delivery and compromises sanitary protection necessary in a surgical care suite. The planning and design of a surgical suite, as correctly indicated by the Preserve Park Slope people, would have the prep, recovery, and surgical functions on one floor. It would also have direct access to several, central sterile supply, which brings the instruments to the rooms, and allows doctors to come in and re-clothe and regown and change before they go into the procedures. The combination of those three elements on one floor is not possible within the confines of either our plan or the Preserve Park Slope alternate. Our plan provided a solution to this that put recovery on one floor, surgery on the floor below it, and then the prep areas, including central sterile and staff locker rooms, with designated elevator connections that served only those three functions and only those floors. This is a worst case. This does not allow for the proper care, of care delivery, by virtue of its shape, by virtue of its distance, and by virtue of the inability to provide all the functions that would work with a surgical suite. Next line. Lastly, with regard to the traffic and circulation space, when we studied a complying alternate to the scheme, we also looked at building over the garage. And we felt that you could not fit the delicate care-delivery functions of surgery into that space. And we had a different function that was narrower, trying to avoid the complications with the garage. We contend that whatever is built over the garage would require a designated entrance from Fifth Street, because of the need for people to diverse vertically within the building and to get to upper floors without having to go through a Byzantine path that circuits throughout the entire building that is exhausting and difficult for patients, especially those who are weak and need of the care being provided here. So because of that, we contend that Fifth Street would be hurt for several reasons if this scheme was built, and this would be worse to the community than our concept. Number one, there would be patient drop-off on Fifth Street. Number two, people who are being dropped off, the people who are still in the car, would have to circle around to try to get to parking, or else go into the garage from Fifth Street, which is again creating a traffic issue with Fifth Street. The loading dock is another issue presented as a problem in the scheme proposed by Park Slope. We had the loading dock pushed as far back to the south on our site as possible, for the express reason to allow trucks to come in headfirst, exit headfirst, and maneuver into a loading position on our property, just as we're having patients dropped off within our property, trying to help the community. This concept pushes the loading dock to Fifth Street, would necessitate trucks maneuvering in Fifth Street, right across the street from the school. We don't think that's a good idea, and we contend that that's difficult. If one would argue that, no, that's not true, you can still skate by behind it, well, the materials handling and support space would be further diminished by taking out the lower-left portion of that wing to accommodate the headroom necessary to get into the garage in the first place, it just would not be workable. So in summary, we're suggesting that good planning principles went into the design, a lot of attention was put to developing this scheme, and we contend that the Park Slope, while maybe well-intentioned, is really a detriment, not a help to the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Excuse me.
Yes, Commissioner.
I guess one of the obvious things that I thought could be used above the garage is the parking that's currently in the parking levels in the care center. And it just seems to me that you have a structure that has a foundation, it's a big open space there on the site, and I just wanted to know what you thought about the feasibility of adding--
Vertically?
Yes.
To that garage?
And then using that cellar space either for program needs, or for relocated mechanicals, or just levels that did not have to be constructed?
The current garage has three levels below grade. You access from the driveway, just in this location, between the Medical Arts Building and the proposed, the existing garage. You go down and you spiral down today into the lower levels of that garage. The top roof deck of the garage today, which has, I don't know, 50 or so parking spaces, is accessed from Fifth Street at the eastern end of that rectangle, and is not connected in any way with the garage below. If you want to put parking there, you would have to create a separate entrance and circulation, which would only be accessed from Fifth Street. You couldn't get to it from the current driveway or Fifth Street. We thought, what we learned from the community, notably the people on Fifth Street, that we would do anything we could to protect Fifth Street from the intrusion, part of why we put the bulk of the building on Sixth Street rather than on Fifth Street. And so putting parking there, we think, would add to the traffic on Fifth Street and not allow for continuity within the garage below.
So what you're saying is, the layout, the internal layout that you have for the drop-off, will have access to the lower levels--
Yes.
But it doesn't have access to the ground floor level? And that ground floor level is only accessed from Fifth Street, and you couldn't--
The topmost level of that garage was the ground level, which is at grade, at the east end. It's a little higher than grade because the grade slopes down as you go to Seventh Avenue. We're proposing to keep some parking on the west end of it, but on the east end, we're proposing to put the receiving dock. So we would keep some parking there, a small amount, but we think that the basic parking, our concept, puts two levels of parking below our new building and connects to the existing garage underneath. So you can get to the garage when our project will be finished in one of two ways. You could come in the existing driveway between the Medical Arts Building and Wesley House, and go down and spiral within the garage, or you could come into our entrance and connect in, and you could go out either entrance, in either entrance. Adding on top would create a complete separation, and it's a small footprint compared to the garage below.
So it wouldn't be possible to add a ramp up to upper floors of parking, is what you're saying?
If you put a ramp in, you would not have a loading dock on the property. If you put parking there and not the loading dock, you'd have to put loading dock some other place, and we think that could be a problem. You'd wind up with trucks perhaps loading on Fifth Street or Sixth Street, which would just aggravate the situation. So we think a parking solution, when balanced against the movement of traffic and vehicles entering and leaving, is not helping the situation that the community people have exposed, espoused here today.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our response.
Okay. Are there any questions for, for Ms. Magna?
I think just a few things. Some of this additional information, you know, welcome to review, including some of the responses to what Preserve Park Slope gave us, if you could put that in the record. I think particularly related to the program, and actually, all the five points that was made in the last presentation regarding the feasibility of this alternative and its pros and cons. I think what would be helpful to us, and the board is really to identify, mitigation may not be the right word, but the measures that are going to be put in place to address traffic loading as well as construction. So on the issue of, it's really an issue on Fifth Streets of loading, and I know that they talked about trucks, is there a way that one can ensure that the loading peaks are not at the same time as the peak of the school and where you have the heaviest traffic along Fifth Street? I think there's a way to address that, which is, it's really about the operation of the hospital and when they could sort of determine when the loading can take place. I think in terms of the construction impacts along Sixth Street, if there's a real plan to put all the staging essentially inside the site, for most part, including trucks to come in and come out during demolition and removal of material, then I think that should be outlined as well, and the board will take that into consideration in terms of incorporating it into any support.
Yes. And I should have said, as I think I said earlier, that we will submit revised plans reflecting the changes to the building, which were described in our letter last week, and we will describe in writing the, in more detail, Mr. Gunther's presentation regarding what we see as the infirmities of the Preserve Park Slope proposal. We will submit a letter describing that. And I believe we're also going to submit a letter in response to some of the comments on traffic and environmental issues.
Right, I know that were raised today as well. Okay, yes.
Regarding the construction period, do you have to meet with the DOT regarding truck routes and have that planned out in advance?
I believe that to be the case, but I would prefer that, okay, did Chuck have to leave? Okay. Yeah, I mean, right, but I believe as part of planning for any construction, there is a, there are extensive meetings regarding, regarding not only the construction staging, but also how traffic will move throughout the neighborhood.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? All right, Mr. Klein, do you want to say anything into the record? Yes, please come forward.
Just please restate, you're in for the record.
Yes, Stuart Klein. I just want to address three quick items. Number one, as you know, the building code requires that foundations be able to support, or you have to show that they support 150 percent of, there's a safety factor of 150 percent, or 50 percent, rather, on all foundations. I assume that this garage was built, and everybody, you know, I believe in their mind understands this garage was built for future development. And I think that's why New York Methodist is trying so desperately not to shift any of this bulk over to on top of the garage. In fact, I don't believe the question was answered with regard to any other ancillary facilities that could be possibly put over the garage. That was not addressed in the response by Perkins. Number one. Number two, I know of no section of the multiple dwelling law that requires more than a 35-foot rear yard, certainly a 45-foot rear yard is more than enough. There was an error in that. And I also will have to reconcile some of the testimony from Perkins Eastman with the plans that it submitted for 1133 York, because that seems to violate some of the industry standards they spoke about, or at least presented to you today. And the final issue is that this whole idea of programmatic needs seems to have been put on the side. They're constantly referring to it and using it and mentioning it in some type of encantatorial fashion, it becomes a mantra, and it becomes an assumption that it in fact exists. It doesn't exist. They haven't proven that it exists. And as a matter of fact, I've often, I've submitted a number of times and testified here a number of times, that this is palpably deficient in the programmatic needs aspect of the A finding. And I know for a fact that they have done studies, they have done studies in preparation of the certificate of needs that has to be presented to the Department of Health in order to secure the certificate of needs, and I ask that the board demand that those studies be submitted to it. If the board is not going to demand that those studies be submitted to it, I have no other recourse than to subpoena them and issue a subpoena to Cusacktum, to New York Methodist Hospital, and hopefully, through the subpoena, I'll be able to present them myself. Why they're being hidden from you is beyond me. I suspect they're being hidden from you for a particular reason, and that reason is they cannot support the programmatic needs argument. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would you like to respond to--
We have no further response.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions for the applicant? So this is what I suggest. I think we should, there are two issues here. One has to do with the variance itself, one is the amendment, and just leaving the amendments aside, just on the variance case, which is 28913BZ, I think we should close the hearing. I think we'll set a schedule so that you can submit your papers to us, Mr. Klein, and Preserve Park Slope have the opportunity to review that and submit their comments, and then we can, you can have the last set of papers to be submitted. On the amendment case, what we will do is we will continue the hearing. That'll give Mr. Klein the opportunity to review that, since he had said he hadn't. It'll also allow the board and the applicant to make sure that they meet all the notification requirements, so we would be fulfilling all the board's rules as well. So why don't we first set the schedule for the variance? Would you be able to submit in a week?
I think we would, like, two weeks, so we make sure that the redesign of the building is really, meets the hospital's programmatic needs. So if we could have two weeks, I think it's the 22nd--
That seems fine.
We will submit everything by then.
Okay, April 22nd.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Klein will give you till May 6th?
Madam Chair, it appears that the board is unwilling to ask for the studies that were prepared by New York Methodist in support in order to support its programmatic needs. And it appears that you also don't want to address the issue of whether or not this comes within the number of the Cornell decision and the Sarah Lawrence decision. So I will, at the instruction of my client, be issuing a subpoena for these items under the CPLR, the relevant section of CPLR. It will be approximately two weeks before I have that in hand to submit to the board. I would ask, therefore, ask for additional time.
Okay, we're going to give you up to May 6th for your submission, and--
That's predicated on the, on the fact, of course, that they in fact conform to the subpoena. If they don't, I will be addressing a letter asking for additional time.
All right. The schedule right now is May 6th, and Ms. Magna, you can respond back on May 13th, and we can set the decision date for May 20th. On, let me just make sure I have the calendar in. Okay, for 14292BZ, we will continue the hearing on April 29th. Mr. Klein, if you have any comments on that, and you'd like to submit them beforehand, you can submit them on April--
I'm sorry, I speak--
Okay, April 29th is the continued hearing for the amendment. Do you have anything to submit into the record?
Yes, look at--
Okay, well, I'll give you a date. Okay, so it's April 22nd. If you have anything to submit--
What the proper notifications make, because my clients didn't know about it.
Right, I understand that.
Yes, so the, well, I'll have--
As long as they, if the board and the applicant meets the notification requirements in the amount of time, then it would meet the rules. So April 29th. You are in a position to tell your clients that it's going to be on April 29th, and so they'll go through the process, a proper notification, but I think everybody's here, or a good portion of people are here, who are being told that the hearing's going to be on April 29th. Right? So that's for the amendment. Any other issues or questions? Yes. All right, and we're going to close the hearing for 28913BZ.
Commissioner Vasin?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
This concludes the public hearing. This concludes the public hearing.